Order the Monday, May 12th, Raymore City Council meeting. Ms. Warner, would you call, roll to confirm quorum.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Holman, absent. Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present, we do have a quorum. Everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a couple of proclamations tonight, starting with Police Officers Memorial Day, so you'll join me down here. Make sure I got the right one here, yes I do. A proclamation, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed Public Law 87-726, designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in the week of which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Raymore Police Department, and whereas May 15th is designated Police Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff, and whereas it is important for the citizens of Raymore to know and understand the responsibilities, hazards, sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and whereas the men and women of the Raymore Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service by protecting citizens' life and property against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, the Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2014, as Police Officers Memorial Day.[154.34][154.34](applause) Would you like to say a few things?
I'll be very brief, I know it's hard to believe, but on behalf of the men and women of the Raymore Police Department, I want to say thank you for this proclamation and for the recognition to all those officers fallen in the line of duty throughout the years. Please, if you can, and your schedules will permit, join us on Thursday, the 15th, for the memorial service which will take place on the front steps here in front of City Hall. Thank you.
And we have one more proclamation. Join me up here. Proclamation, whereas the public's work, start over again, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well, their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work officials, and whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works departments are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby officially proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th is National Public Works Week.
Congratulations, thank you.[271.33][271.33](applause) I'll be briefer than chief, I want to thank you, and on behalf of my operations and engineering teams, thank you for this proclamation and your support through the years to their efforts. Thank you.
All righty, continuing on, we have personal appearance by Monique Lewis. Ms. Lewis, this is Older Americans Month.
My name is Monique Lewis, and I live at 124 East Calico, and I'm glad to see Jay Holman there, although I'm sorry to see him go off the Parks and Recreation Board. Oh yeah, I was talking this. Mayor Kirkoff, councilmembers, Older Americans Month is the month of May. The theme for this month is actually safety, and safe today, healthy tomorrow. We're all aging, I know that. In the National Council of Senior Citizens, met with President John F. Kennedy, designating May 1963 as Senior Citizen Month. It was an attempt to let everybody know that seniors who have lived until that time had helped an awful lot build this country. In 1980, President Jimmy Carter proclamation changed the name to the Older Americans Month, a time to celebrate those 65 and older, and those 65 and older are growing in number, and I will give you a few numbers, but I will not bore you for too long. One of the things that the Administration on Aging and the Administration for Community Living would like the aging people and everybody to know that there are falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries among adults 65 years and older. Annually, older adult falls are responsible for more than 20,700 deaths, 2,400,000 emergency department visits, and more than 30 billion indirect medical costs. So falls is something that our elder population needs to look out for. Lack of exercise brings on falls very easily. Combination of medications, as we grow older, we need to have more medication, and sometimes they don't jive well with each other, and people become drowsy or do not know where they are. Poor vision is another reason for falls. Hazards at home, and I recommend all the elder people who are living by themselves or even with their families to make sure that they have grab bars, that the scatter rags are out of the way or tacked down, that there are no electrical lines that could make them fall. Fire safety. US Fire Administration data states that Americans over age 65 are one of the groups at greatest risk of dying in fire. An average of more than 1,000 Americans die each year, and that is too many. Motor vehicle safety, I know that we have our leader of the Police Department here, but the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reported in 2011 that 17% of traffic fatalities in the United States were among the people 65 and older. Loss of muscle tone, flexibility, changes in vision. Elders can protect themselves by taking refresher driving courses, remaining as fit and flexible as possible, and taking care of their vision and hearing. There's a lot of talk about phones and texting on phones, and I had a phone call the other day, and I was on Highway 71 or Interstate 49, and I pulled over because it was my daughter and I did not want to talk while I was driving. Yet I see all the time, I drive down to the plaza very often, and I see all the time people holding their phones and texting, or holding their phones on the air, and I really think that we need to have more laws, I guess, or try to get the people to be a little bit more understanding. I have a few statistics, and I will not bore you too much, though. The Missouri Census in 2010 stated that in Missouri, we have 6,44,173 people living. In 2013, the estimate in Cass County was 100,641. Of those 65 and older, 14% or 14,693 people are older and living here in Cass County. Cass County is a rural area, for the most part, and many elder do not have enough food, and I bring out something that we here in Raymore do not have for the moment, is meals on wheels. It would be very nice if we could get that. They do have a senior citizen in Belton that do bring meals to people, and some of them do live here in Raymore, but we need to look at trying to get that here in Raymore. In Raymore, we have, as you can see when you drive into Raymore, 19,550 people living. Those 65 and older are 13% or 2,678, of which I am, and I am proud of being an elder citizen. But the elder citizens, their group are growing larger, and what will happen is that at one time or another, there will be as many older than 65 as there are younger than 18. Our population is really expanding, and the largest group that is expanding is the 85 and older. Many of them would prefer to live at home, some of them do live in nursing homes, and it is more expensive to be in a nursing home. It is also 24-hour care, and I know that many people really prefer to be independent and to continue to drive, but families need also to take care of them. But it is a burden, it is a big burden, to always take care of somebody older that cannot always say what they want, or do what they want, or get up when they need to get up and go to the bathroom. So it is a problem. Also, I would like to tell everybody who is sitting at this council that 71.9% of people older than 65 vote. So they, it is important that you get and that you think of them, and that you help them. There are also centenarians, but I could not get, the census did not tell me how many centenarians we have here in Missouri, I do not know. I could not get that, I tried, but I could not get that. Maybe somebody else can let me know how many centenarians we have here in the United States, and I know that we have a lot of them. And for the most part, eight out of 100 centenarians, female, there are 20 centenarians, male. So I guess males die earlier than females, or maybe females take better care of themselves. I don't know, anyway. The month of May is also divided into Week 1 and 5, and just quickly, I will tell you. Week 1 was getting prepared. Nowhere to go in case of tornado, fire, or other disaster. Post-emergency contacts near your phone. Have an emergency supply of food and water in your home. Week 2 is driving safely. If hearing aids are prescribed, make sure that you have them. Be careful when opening car windows, for the drafts can impair the hearing aids effectiveness. Talk with doctors about the effects that ailments or medications may have on your driving ability. Always wear your seatbelt. Brush up on your driving skills, and take a refresher course. May I ask if we give a refresher course here for driving? Or would we go to registration or whatever? No? I think it would be a good idea. And also keep your windshield headlights and mirrors clean, keep a safe distance between you and the car ahead. Week 3 is home safety, and I have mentioned one or two things. One of the things that they do say is lower the water temperature on your water heater so the water does not scold you. I saw a lot of burns, by the way, of elderly people who do not realize how hot their water is getting into the bathtub or into the, or into the. Check smoke alarm batteries regularly. Week 4 is food safety, and I don't do this, and I guess I should, at least once a week, throw out food that should not be eaten. Store cold food below 40 degrees, keep hot food above 140 degrees. And here I have to say, I hope the older people realize that it's very easy to get on fire if you have long sleeves, so do be careful. And Week 5 of the month of May is personal safety. Be aware of your surroundings, keep valuable items out of sight in your car, and do not give out personal information over the phone, or in person to somebody you do not know. Shred documents such as bank statements, credit card bills, et cetera. Carry identification on you, keep your home well-lit inside and out. Do not let strangers into your house. That is all I have to say, but I hope that the people listening take care of their elder people if they are living at home, and I hope, you know, there has been a lot of talk about bullying in schools. There is also bullying of elder. It is not a subject that we talk very much about, but it does happen, so please, all of us be gentle to each other, and I hope that this will stay a good community for older people, although if I didn't have a car, I wouldn't be able to get to the grocery store, so I'm not sure what we would do. We need maybe a little bus that goes around. Thank you for listening to me.
Move on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thanks, sir. I'll call on the Parks and Recreation Director, John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Good evening. I had the opportunity today to attend a meeting that was put on by the Mid-America Regional Council, and what this meeting was for was, is for the new bicycle plan that is going into not just Cass County, but the whole metropolitan area, and I would strongly encourage you to take the opportunity to get on Mark's website and make comment. This new plan will go into effect in December, actually they'll complete the plan in December, and it'll go into effect this coming year, but right now they are looking for input from public citizens on this plan, and this is the opportunity, if you ride a bike, or if you have children or friends that ride bikes, for everybody to do something as far as this future plan for cycling in our community. A couple other things real quick. Registration is open for Summer Quest Day Camp. This is our summer camp out at Recreation Park. We have an action, fun-filled, summer event camp for this year, and we encourage everyone to take a look at this. If you need someplace to keep the kids busy, this is a great opportunity to do that. Recreation, baseball, and softball start here in one week from tonight. The kids have been practicing since April 21st. We have over 535 kids in the program this year, so Recreation Park will become very busy here in another week. I'd like to thank Emergency Management, they have provided weather radios that we placed in each one of our three concession stands. Not only do we have lightning detection, but we now have these weather radios that will alert us of any oncoming storm event. Finally, the 12th Annual Walter Buck Memorial Fishing Derby is scheduled for Hawkeridge Park on Saturday, June 14th. This is a free event, we have lots of sponsors and a lot of fun prizes and activities for the kids, so we encourage all the kids to come out to Hawkeridge Park for this event. And I would like to also thank the Community Bank of Raymore and the South Metro Fire Department. We had our Friday night movie in the park this last Friday evening, we had over 500 people come out, it was a beautiful, beautiful evening, and we showed the Disney movie Frozen, and the fire department handed out free popcorn, and we could not do this without Community Bank of Raymore's support. Any questions you might have?
Questions of staff? Councilmember Westco?
Since the Parks Department was showing Frozen in the park, is that the reason why you can't find a DVD copy of it anywhere in Walmart, so that you could drive your attendance?
Yeah, we made sure they took those all off the shelves, so you would have to come see it at our parks, or...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John. I'll call on the Community Development Director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. Just to notice the council that the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is on June 3rd here in the council chambers, they have three items on their agenda, they'll do their annual review of our Unified Development Code, and then they have two requests that deal with the same property. The Ridgeway Villas at the Legends, the townhome project that is proposed for the undeveloped land area behind Culvers, there off of Mod Drive and Cinnabar and Ridgeway. The property owner is moving forward with a site plan for the 56 townhome units that are proposed, and they're doing a replat where they're reconfiguring the lots. The change with the lots is to eliminate some pre-existing townhome lots that have been platted but not built upon, they need to eliminate those lot lines and create the new lot lines for the new proposed townhomes, they're slightly different than what is currently existing there. So that final plat and the site plan for that project, again, on the June 3rd agenda, that's currently what we have scheduled.
Any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And just a word about meeting schedule for the rest of this month. There is a work session scheduled a week from tonight, May 19th. The quarterly joint meeting of the City of Raymore, City Peculiar, Raypek School District, Cass County, be hosted by Cass County on May 21st, Wednesday, May 21st, and if you do intend to go to that, if you could please RSVP at the city clerk by the end of this week, that would be Friday, May 16th. You will not meet two weeks from tonight, May 26th, as that is Memorial Day, but you will have a retreat, which will be on Saturday, May 31st, at 8:30 a.m. here in this room to discuss general council priorities, so that is your schedule for the rest of May. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Move on to committee reports, and we had a couple of ribbon cuttings recently that were chaired by Mayor Protam Westco in my absence. On April 22nd, Aflac Insurance, I think it's a regional office over at 1116A Remington, and then on May 2nd, Balance Point Heating and Cooling at 109 South Madison, so thank you for standing in for me. We do have a ribbon cutting this week, May 14th, for Home Bridge Financial Services at 1116D Remington, that's at, be Wednesday, Wednesday at 11:30, 5:14. Yeah, Wednesday. Move on now to Consent Agenda. Whoop. Yes?
Just for the record, I'm sure Jeannie already caught it, and Ms. Lewis already recognized me, but I got here between 3:00 and 4:00 Pledge of Allegiance and presentations and awards.
Okay, the chair will recognize that you had trouble finding a parking spot.
Yes, sir.[1408.15][1408.15](laughing)
The chair will also recognize that what half of our room is filled with students.
Yes, sir.[1412.71][1412.71](laughing)
We'll move on to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, to include Item A, City Council minutes from April 28th, 2014. Item B, the reappointment of William Manson to Park Board. Item C, the appointment of Jim Haddock to Park Board. Item D, the acceptance of the 2013 curb replacement project. Item E, the acceptance of the Canter Ridge Phase II Storm Granage Improvement Project. Item F, acceptance of the South Fox Ridge Drive Sidewalk Project. And Item G, acceptance of public improvements, acceptance of public improvements for Westbrook 9th of Creekmore.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items A through G. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Abdelgawad?
I'll just say real quick that I'm happy to see Mr. Haddock here and his willingness to serve on the Park Board.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, and I disposes of the consent agenda. Move on to unfinished business, the second reading of Bill 2956 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2956 by Title Only. In ordinance creating the City Sales Tax Reserve Fund for the tax increment refunding and improvement revenue bonds, Raymore Galleria Project, Series 2014A, amending the annual budget of the city for the fiscal year beginning November 1, 2013, to provide for an initial deposit into such fund and providing for the administration of such fund.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2956.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2956, the budget amendment, establishment of the City Sales Tax Reserve Fund.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the second reading of Bill 2956. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And we have the second reading of Bill 2961 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2961 by Title Only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2014 Park Fund Budget.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2961.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2961, the budget amendment for the Park Fund.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the second reading of Bill 2961. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And the second reading of Bill 2953 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2953 by Title Only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ViRIO Planning and Design to provide consultant services for the citywide trail master plan, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2953.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2953, the Ward of Contract for the Trails Master Plan.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the second reading of Bill 2953. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2960 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2960 by Title Only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Utility Solutions LLC for the 58 Highway Culvert Rehabilitation Project, City Project Number 14-195-201, in the amount of $13,685, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2960.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2960, the Ward of Contract for the 58 Highway Culvert Rehabilitation.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the second reading of Bill 2960. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the second reading of Bill 2959 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2959 by Title Only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Section 702.2, sanitation facilities of the ICC/NSSA standard for the design and construction of storm shelters, ICC 500-2008, adopted as part of Chapter 500 Building Regulations of the Raymore City Code.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2959.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2959, Amendment to Chapter 500 Building Code, Storm Shelters.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the second reading of Bill 2959. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Nope, I missed one. Okay, let's do it again, because I went too quick for myself. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Opposed? One in opposition. Got it, thank you. And that takes care of the old business, we'll move on to new business, beginning with the liquor license renewal. This requires a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing by calling for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in City Clerk, Jeannie Warner.
The City Clerk Office has received renewal applications for the 2014-15 liquor licenses from those businesses listed on the agenda. All businesses requiring a liquor license have met City Code requirements, and approval by a majority of the City Council is required. Issuance of the city liquor license is contingent on approval from the state of Missouri. Representatives for each business are in attendance in the audience should council have any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, we have a public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak, please come forward, identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, and that's all the action that's required of this body, isn't it?
Would be a motion.
A motion?
For approval.
Okay, motion for approval. I'll entertain a motion...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve... Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the applications that have been filed for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen liquor licenses.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve the liquor license renewals. Is there any discussion? All in favor, and I'm gonna go slowly this time, make sure I get everybody right. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to the next item. This is delinquent occupational licenses. Also requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing by calling for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in the city clerk.
A memo with specific information pertaining to those businesses which are the subject of this public hearing has been distributed to each of you on the Diaz. Notices for the occupational license renewals were mailed November the twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, and in addition, reminder letters were mailed on January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, and on February fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. On April second, two thousand fourteen, a letter which served as official notification of the violation was mailed to each business owner both by regular mail and certified return receipt, which outlined specific sections of the city code that pertain to the occupational license. The letter also gave the businesses ten days from the date of the letter to respond to the city clerk to satisfy the requirements of obtaining their occupational license. This public hearing provides an opportunity for the business owners to address the city council and provide defense or evidence as to why penalty sanctions should not be imposed. The public hearing was properly advertised in the Journal on the May first and May eighth, two thousand fourteen editions. The following businesses are subject of this public hearing. CMP Designs, DN M Cleaning, Freedom Stop, Heartland Body Repair, JVS Logistics, Marks Remodeling, Mirror Images Salon, Tina Morris Hair Stylist, Oliver's Pizzeria, Chad Pennell Professional Travel, Raymore Dairy Queen, The Pit Grill and Bar, Trade Wind Services, William Lawn Concrete and Z Graphics. Staff recommends that any business deemed by the council after this public hearing to be in violation be sent a letter giving them ten business days to pay the delinquent license fee and fine, and stating that if compliance does not occur within that timeframe, a misdemeanor citation will be issued, and the city attorney may seek action in Circuit Court to restrain, correct, or abate continued operation of the business. Mayor, that closes the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Councilmember Morehead.
Mr. Berlin, I've received here just a statement of what was just read of the businesses. Have any of these businesses made any attempt to communicate with the city about this?
Jeannie, can you report?
There's a brief description on there. I'm sorry, I didn't include that information. I don't have it. My guess would be no. I mean, there's a couple that maybe have submitted. I think there's one that submitted payment, but no application and no supporting documentation.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. I'll open the floor for public comment. Anybody wanting to speak, please come forward, state, name and address for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, entertain a motion to... Help me here.
Yes, sir. We would ask for a motion that any business deemed by the council to be in violation be sent a letter giving them ten business days to pay the delinquent license fee and fine, and stating that if compliance does not occur within that timeframe, a misdemeanor citation will be issued, and the city attorney may seek action in the Circuit Court to restrain, correct, or abate continued operation of the business.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to do exactly that, which is the staff recommendation here, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that any business found to be delinquent in their occupational license be sent the official ten-day letter to become compliant.
And if the compliance does not occur within that timeframe, misdemeanor citation be issued by the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to give the businesses ten days to pay the delinquent license fee and fine, and stating that if compliance does not occur in that timeframe, misdemeanor citation will be issued by the city attorney. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And we move on to another public hearing. Maybe we have first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-two by a title only.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-two by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, annexing two segments of right-of-way of the south side of Huback Hill Road, east of South Wind Estate Subdivision Road, located in Section twenty-five and Section twenty-six, Township forty-six north, Range thirty-two west, Cass County, Missouri, pursuant to Section seven one point zero one four of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri.
I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call in the Community Development Director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. This bill proposes the annexation of right-of-way along the south side of Huback Hill Road between the South Wind Estate Subdivision and the eastern boundary line of the city. On April seventeenth of this year, the Cass County Commission did authorize the filing of a petition for voluntary annexation of this right-of-way. Part of the process for voluntary annexation of the right-of-way is to notify any adjacent landowner adjacent to the right-of-way to be annexed. We are not annexing any private property, but we do notify them that the right-of-way is being proposed for annexation, and advise them of the public hearing this evening where they have the opportunity to make comment. I do note that no objections or comments have been made to city staff regarding this request, and the city and Cass County request approval of the bill this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right. Oops, sorry. Councilmember Holman?
Just to check for understanding, Mr. Catterett, we would be basically taking over the road and the right-of-way on either sides of the road, and then road maintenance. Is that...
Yes, the north side of the right-of-way of the road currently in the city, so we're talking about the south side. We will annex only the right-of-way, and then the city would assume maintenance of the entire roadway that we're annexing. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Delga one?
Just a quick review. We're pretty much taking care of these roads anyway.
Most of this right-of-way, yes. A small section, no, but most of it we've been maintaining. Yes.
Any other questions of staff? All right. I'll open the floor to public comment. Please identify yourself for the record. Keep your comments to under five minutes. I'll leave it open a little bit longer this time. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill twenty-nine sixty-two, the annexation of County Right-of-Way for Huback Hill Road.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-two. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And let's move on to Bill twenty-nine sixty-one, another public hearing. So, the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-one?
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-one by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending various sections of the Unified Development Code of the Raymore City Code.
Thank you. And I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you, sir. The bill before you this evening does propose several amendments to various sections of our Unified Development Code, specifically regarding stream buffer protection. And when we do an amendment to our Unified Development Code, it does require a public hearing, so I do need to enter into the record the staff report that was submitted to the council this evening, and then the list of the twelve exhibits within the staff report, all those who are included within your packet. I'm not gonna restate all the information that's in the staff report. It is a long staff report, a lot of information containing the background regarding the stream buffer regulations and what's being proposed. I'm just going to go through and try to clarify what's currently in the stream buffer provisions, and then what this Bill twenty-nine sixty-one proposes to do, and I'll, again, only touch on the highlights. The current stream buffer provisions do apply to all the streams that are identified on our Raymore Stream Order Map. And this was a map that was adopted when we adopted the Storm Water Management Plan back in two thousand and eight. I do note, though, that when we adopted the stream buffer regulations, that any property that has a final plat, a preliminary plat, or a memorandum of understanding is currently exempt from the stream buffer requirements. The current provisions do allow a property owner to apply for a Clean Water Act, a Section four oh four permit, to generally to fill and relocate a stream. So currently is the right of a property owner to file that request. If the four oh four permit is issued, and it does allow the stream to be filled, then there is no buffer requirement that will apply. There's no stream, so there's no buffer requirement. If the four oh four permit allows the stream to be relocated to somewhere on the site, then our current code does require the buffer to apply to that relocated stream. And then one final comment on the, again, the existing provisions. I do want to make note that when a subdivider comes in, a property owner comes in to subdivide their property, the stream buffer provisions do allow lots to encroach in the stream buffer area. They can encroach into the stream buffer. They can entirely cover the stream buffer. Our, our, the stream buffer provisions do not restrict where the lot line is compared to where the stream buffer area is. Now, if a buffer is located on a private property, then there would be an easement, conservation easement, protecting that land area. But buffers are allowed to be included within the lots. What is not allowed to be contained within a lot is if any of that buffer is also within flood plain. So as you, as you note, we do not allow any part of a flood plain to be planted as part of a lot, but we do allow a buffer to be planted as part of a lot. Those are the current stream buffer provisions. What the bill before you this evening generally proposes to do, first, the buffer provisions will apply to all the streams, again, identified on that stream order map, with the caveat that if the stream has a tributary area of forty acres or more. So if you look at some of our Stream Order One classified streams, if they have a tributary area that is less than forty acres, then that stream would not require to be buffered. That is one of the changes. Right now, our code says all streams, Order One through Order Six, shall have a buffer. The proposed amendment this evening says that all streams will have a buffer if that stream has a watershed tributary area of at least forty acres. So there could be instances where a Order One stream would not have to be buffered because it has a very limited watershed area for that stream. So that's one of the changes that's being proposed. The reason for that, that specific recommended change, it really comes out of comments that were made at two public hearings that were held regarding stream buffer. Back in October of two thousand thirteen, the council actually had the initial public hearing regarding stream buffers. And then a second hearing was held by the Planning and Zoning Commission in February. And at that time, there was a strong criticism from property owners and the development community indicating that the required requirements that we have within our code are too restrictive. Some of them labeled them some of the most restrictive requirements for stream buffers in the entire Kansas City metro area. It was identified at your October hearing, and again in February, where property owners suggested a possible takings claim based upon the fact that so much private property land was going to be designated as unbillable because of the buffers. They felt that the buffers took up too much land that would be allowed for development, and had some pretty serious claims made publicly during those meetings. After the February meeting, again, that was a second public hearing that we had held, staff felt the need to find some middle ground. We felt that, you know, we needed to take a look, an in-depth study of our watershed management plan, take a look at that again, and make sure we understood what was recommended as part of that plan. And then we also looked at the ordinances of other communities, because that kept on coming back as a comment of trying to provide consistency with what some of the other communities in the metro area are doing. And so when we look back at the watershed management plan, the one thing that jumped out at us, the one thing that I note, is the actual mission statement of the Watership Master Plan, because it really goes to what we're trying to accomplish with the amendment. And in one sentence, it reads, the mission statement reads, "To develop stream corridor buffers which align with the Kansas City Metropolitan Chapter of the American Public Works Association," that's APWA, "in the fifty-six hundred guidelines." We've heard the city engineer talk a lot about the APWA guidelines. We utilize the guidelines for other water management issues of the city. And what we wanted to do was try to modify our ordinance, again, to align with those guidelines. And those are the guidelines that many communities in the area, again, have been drafted off of or modeled off of. So what we feel with the proposed ordinance before you this evening is that we are consistent now with the APWA guidelines, and we're consistent with most of the other communities in the K.C. metro area. What other proposed amendments that's proposed as part of this bill is to eliminate the automatic exemption for MOUs. So we still propose to have the exemption for final plats and preliminary plats, but we eliminate the automatic exemption for MOUs. And what that does is that actually brings in over seventeen hundred acres of land currently exempt and pulls them under the regulations of our stream buffer provision. So we feel that's pretty significant. I do want to note, as with the existing ordinance, the proposed ordinance still allows a property owner to file for that Section four oh four permit. That is a right, no matter what the city council does with this proposed ordinance, that is a right the property owner has, is to request a permit to either fill, place fill or dredge within the stream. In essence, they could eliminate the stream or relocate the stream. Under the proposed ordinance, if, again, if the permit allows the stream to be filled, there's no buffer because there's no stream segment. The change with the, under the amendment, is that if the four oh four permit allows the street to be relocated, then there either needs to be onsite mitigation provided. So there is some type of mitigation provided for the work that was done to that stream, and it's done onsite, or the relocated stream must contain a stream buffer. So what we're, we're not saying automatically that the stream has to be buffered because there are other onsite mitigation techniques that can be used for that stream or in that stream other than just a stream buffer. So we're providing the property owner some flexibility in how they're going to mitigate the impacts of affecting that stream. And again, we're doing that, you know, the core, the APWA standards, they acknowledge that stream buffers are only one of the tools that are utilized for mitigation. And there are many other items that could be done regarding that stream that really need to be allowed for the property owner to utilize, and not just limit it to just stream buffers. Couple of just general statements in closing then. Just as I indicated, no matter what decision occurs with the city council on this matter, the Corps of Engineers does maintain jurisdiction on any regulated stream within the city. I want to make note of the process that's been used, because I personally feel that the process that we've utilized so far regarding this UDC amendments been extremely transparent. I mean, probably more transparent than most amendments that we make to our code. This goes back to our initial public hearing on this back in October. So we've held three public hearings, the council work session in October, the planning commission in February, and the planning commission in April. And at least one month before each one of these meetings, we did provide the documents that were going to be discussed for that meeting at that time. So we made direct mail notice to the development community and other interested parties at least thirty days in advance of the meeting, and that included copies of the ordinance or any other documents that were going to be discussed, providing a lot of information upfront. We tried to notify the public in every way that we could, the notify be alerts, the website, weekly report postings. We have been very open with the proposed amendments as we have gone through this process. As I noted, again, if the proposed amendment tonight fails, that, again, the Good Ranch subdivision, the Carroll Master Plan, those are the two major subdivisions currently protected by an MOU, they would remain exempt. If the bill is amended to only eliminate the exemption for MOUs and make no other change within the ordinance, we just take away the exemption for MOUs, and especially if we talk about taking away the exemption for preliminary plats, which has been suggested, it really will raise the concern from the development community of takings, because at that point, we really are looking, we're going back to what our initial discussion was from the development community on their concerns of eliminating land from being able to be developed. So basically, the stream buffer is taking up too much of the undeveloped land. So it's just something, again, we really want to make sure that we're cautious of moving forward, is how we address the stream buffers and the applicability to private property. As I mentioned, stream buffers, only one of the BNP. As I mentioned, stream buffers, only one of the BMPs that are identified and recommended, and specifically as part of the water management plan. That particular plan, although it did recommend stream buffers, there's a whole lot of other recommendations in that document, things that we have already adopted within our city code, as well as items that we're currently working on. And then in closing, the planning commission, included in the staff report, are the proposed findings of fact regarding this UDC amendment. And at their April 15 public hearing, the commission did vote eight to one to forward to the council the proposed amendment with their recommendation of approval. I've included the minutes, I believe, from all the public hearings that have been held, including the one on April 15. So hopefully, that summarizes the public comments that the commission and the council have received today. So that will close this staff report at this time.
Okay, questions to staff? Councilmember Wesco?
Is this ordinance in full compliance with DNR and EPA regulations as they exist today?
The guidance that we get from the DNR and the EPA is that we are required to protect under our stormwater discharge permit to protect priority areas such as riparian corridors for all new development, redevelopment projects. Under their guidelines, new development projects are anything, anything that disturbs one acre or more during the development process. The guidance that we get from the legal community is, and from model ordinances, is where we pick up the language, making exemptions, exceptions for properties that have been preliminary platted or final platted, or in the case of our current ordinance, the discussion regarding the MOUs. And that does deal with, and I will defer to Mr. Willert on this, but allows for pre, to uphold previously made contracts between the developers and the city. But I'll defer a little bit more to Joe regarding that issue.
Other questions to staff? Councilmember Stevens, and then Wesco?
I have a question about this 40-acre deal. I don't quite understand why all 40 acres, why would they would be considered equivalent, considering the permeability of the soil and slope and all that sort of thing could be radically different. I don't quite understand how that works in there.
One of the things that came out during the public hearings was, how do you define a stream? And the definition that we took and was pointed out to us from other communities, as well as the APWA Chapter 5600, is their definition of a stream is anything that has a watershed greater than 40 acres. And that is, that's just, that is the, for looking for consistency and a way to consistently define what a stream is from property to property to property, we are recommending that that definition be included in the stream buffer ordinance.
Councilmember Wesco?
Question for our legal counsel. If the council implements this amendment, do we incur the wrath of state and federal regulators who have much larger legal teams and much deeper pockets than we do?
I think the staff has worked a coordinated effort to go back with what we're doing. We've consulted with consultants like Mr. Flick and have had, I believe Mr. Crass has presented back to review by DNR and others, the steps we're taking here. And so my answer is, it's been a coordinated effort as best we can to try to have a balanced approach that would both, while permitting and protecting the development that has taken place thus far with respect to that which has been platted, and now we're eliminating the MOU exemption and trying to bring more under the regulations that DNR and EPA had encouraged us to have. I would refer to Mike if he's had any further input with respect to the modified product we've produced now, but we certainly were not looking to incur their wrath, but rather that we are moving forward in a very forward and aggressive fashion to bring more regulation to streams and meet the spirit of protection they wanted.
Other questions to staff? Councilmember Abdel Gwan?
Going back to the 40-acre thing, if, even if the words 40-acre tributary are consistent in other places, I still don't understand what that means. Is there a place that people could go and find, you know, is this a 40-acre stream? Is this not a 40-acre stream? I mean, it seems like in our ordinance now, it's very clear, this is what kind of stream it is, this is what kind of buffer it needs. And so, I mean, help me understand 40-acre tributary, because that's not something you can just look at a map and see that, yes, this stream is, or yes, this stream isn't, or how are people going to know that?
It would be submitted as part of the engineering study, and it is, it is very similar to any of the stormwater calculations that have to be submitted as part of the development when we're looking at detention requirements and those type of things. You use a topographic map, and you can identify the area. What a tributary area is, basically, is a small watershed for that reach of the stream. So you look at the contours, and the contours indicate what the drainage boundary is for that particular stream. And that's how you determine the tributary area, and then there is a way, either through CAD automated, to calculate what the area of that watershed is.
Councilmember Holman?
I guess I have two questions, Mr. Crass. I would assume, and you can tell me if my assumption is correct or not, that given the topography of our area and the elevation, that the majority of our streams are going to fall into that Class 1, Class 2 category. Is that a correct assumption? They would be the smaller streams, is that?
Typically, typically, it'd be like the first orders.
First, I'm sorry, first order.
Yeah, it'll definitely be the smaller, the smaller streams, the streams that the development community characterized as small swales in the farm fields and those type of things. A lot of the first-order streams don't have the same characteristics as the higher-order streams. They don't necessarily have a defined channel or a defined, a well-defined high watermark in the field. They're more of a shallow depression.
And do you have any idea, of all of our streams, do we have any data on how many of them have a 40-acre tributary?
No, we have not. We have not gotten down to that level of detail.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Abdel Gwan?
Question for Joe. I know that it was mentioned there were threats of takings, and, you know, if we change this, if we change it so that we take off the MOUs, we let new, or we let the old preliminary plats expire, and they have to come back and start again, which we, as a council, discussed before, is that threat of takings really a threat we need to worry about? Is that something you can answer?
In my research, I don't think they have, they do not believe the development community has unlimited right to extensions of their preliminary plats. And so what I think we're taking here is a balanced approach, that they have a sense time in which to complete or go to final plat, that which they have laid out, so that they can comply with the plan they showed us they would have, and that our regulation is not taking it away from them. If they cannot within that time, and the regulation changes, then I would believe we have a protectable legal interest that this is the new modified standard for development as of this time, and you're going to need to comply with it. So in that sense, in the two larger entities, we're doing with a new defined master development agreement, so that they show that they're in compliance with these new stream standards or standards that acceptable to Mr. Crass. And under this new modified standing, as far as other developments, I believe the council does have the power to change the development standards with reasonable notice to the community, to the development community. But to tell you, you're always insulated, and nobody won't raise a takings claim, would be silly on my part, because someone may raise that, generally an attorney, and you have to face it when it comes. But we've been very concerned about that approach. We had work sessions on it. I did memos and opinion letters to you about that. I think we're trying to protect the city's interest from that time of claim as best we can, while still trying from the other side to balance, to extend the scope of our coverage, so that we do have a stream setback act that is protecting or preserving streams as best we can. I defer to Jim or Mike if they want to talk in that process of that balancing we've been through, if they want to speak to the technical side of that. They may not want to, showing better judgment than me and ability not to be embarrassed in public would be a good move.
All right. We'll start at the end there. Stevens, and then Wesco, then, did you have your hand up? And then Abdel Gwan, and then Kellogg, and then whoever's next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For all the properties that do have exemptions, if they were to have to comply with these stream buffer requirements, how much would be lost? Do you know how many lots, what percentage would be lost because of it?
I can't, off the top of my head, give you those percentage of numbers. We did an analysis of the current preliminary plats that we have that have been granted extensions. And so we do bring that information forward, when that preliminary plat is set to expire, perhaps looking at an extension. So we do at that time try to take a closer look and try to identify what impacts that development or that plat would have if the stream buffer applied. So I, but I haven't individually run the numbers on each undeveloped plat. We have overlaid the stream buffer onto those unexpired plats, just to see the impact. There's, you know, variations. Some have minimal impact, some have extensive impact, so it just varies. And we try to take a look at those on a case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Wesco?
Another question for our legal counsel. And you might not know the answer to this, which is absolutely fine, because I am putting you on the spot. How successful are takings claims when they result from federal or state law? Changes or implementation of such?
There's a balancing test to answer that question, and it's, you know, I would be speaking in very broad, dangerous terms, but on a case-by-case basis, you balance the interest of what you're trying to preserve as a governmental entity versus the value of the property that's being affected, and was there good reason for it? I believe there are good defensible reasons for our stream buffer setback provisions and the revisions we're making to increase them in this part, so that it's not that we're totally out on a limb by ourselves, it's a policy being directed by higher governmental authority, and therefore, we're safe in trying, we are reasonably safe in trying to implement it. Clearly, on a case-by-case basis, as Jim was just saying, we look at each subdivision individually to see how much of a takings effect there is, and we would present that on a case-by-base to the council when there was plat extensions requested or where these developments came forward, or there would even be a negotiation process with the Director of Public Works of what they could try to amend or take out of the effect of the ordinance to try to minimize their loss of value. There's something to be reckoned with. It's certainly not an idle threat, but they are not easy. It's not like we've verended their car, and it's just a question of damages, or we've, you know, inversely condemned their property. That's going to be their argument. The effect of this is that we have taken their property by inverse condemnation, and so we're trying to bring a balanced act that hopefully minimizes that risk to the city.
Councilmember Abdel Gwan?
Thank you. When we started this, we were setting out to make happy the EPA and MDNR, right? And the point was to get more of the land in Raymore under the ruling, so to speak, of the ordinance. I'm concerned that, and I want you to help me understand how this is making it better, that while taking out the MOUs, of course, puts more property under the ruling of the ordinance, but it seems like we're maybe watering down the ordinance so that it, I'm concerned that we're not going to end up making them happy, because we've watered down the ordinance so much that it's really not going to satisfy what they're hoping it's going to satisfy to begin with. Does that make sense?
I think what we have, what we have done, and it is consistent with what was outlined in the Watershed Master Plan, for those, for those properties that are under the MOU and we're looking at them, to provide a detailed plan for how they're going to meet the water quality requirements that a stream buffer provides and other methods. As Jim mentioned, a stream buffer is one, one method in the toolbox, or one item in the toolbox that can be used to enhance the water quality on a site, especially when we're dealing with streams. Some of the other things that we would be looking for in that, in that plan, and in that, what the development would be bringing forward, in addition to meeting, if they're looking for areas where they may want to reduce the buffers, is some in-stream enhancements. A lot of our streams have been impacted just through being downstream from development. They're disconnected from their watershed, or from the flood plain. They have a lot of erosion on the banks. The channels are deeper than they should be. There are techniques that are outlined either in the Best Management Practices Manual or in the Army Corps of Engineers mitigation manual, where they can go in and do restorative measures to those streams to restore the health, to minimize the impacts and potential erosion. So we're looking at a total toolbox package. The buffers are kind of a default mechanism for providing for water quality and some erosion. There are a lot other techniques that can be used to stabilize the stream. So what we're looking for in that, the plan, that the properties that are subject to an MOU would be providing, is a much more coordinated, much more detailed study of the streams, and looking at what it really needs, what needs to be done to restore the stream, and what needs to be done as far as enhancements to protect the stream.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the 40-acre segment of the proposed ordinance, is that arguable or negotiable between the developer and the city, to where the conditions of that 40 acres, you know, under certain circumstances, that it would not apply?
We did not look at it that way. What we were attempting to answer to the development community is, we're looking at two levels here. We've got a local definition of what a stream is and what a stream is under the Clean Water Act. And if there's a gap where a stream segment, it does not fall under the definitions of the Clean Water Act, how does the local, how does the governing body of Raymore define what a stream is and what a stream is that needs to be protected? So we looked at the ordinances and looked at consistency across the metro area, and we took from the APWA, which a lot of the other ordinances have borrowed from or have adopted, and that's the, a stream is anything that has a tributary area of 40 acres or larger. So that's, that's the recommendation that staff is bringing forward for how, to be consistent in answering the development communities, how do you define a stream? Currently, the streams are defined as any stream identified on the, on the stream order map. We were just trying to provide a little more, a little more specificity for what, what does the city of Raymore consider a stream that needs to be protected, or a stream that has value that needs to be protected.
And I'll add to that, that on page three of the memorandum that the city staff had provided, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, that the city staff recognizes that it would be no longer possible for a layperson to simply look at the Watershed Master Plan and know exactly what streams are covered by the ordinance. And you say that a layperson couldn't do that. And then further in the paragraph, it ends with, a developer's engineer would have to submit a detailed study, which would be then reviewed and approved by the Director of Public Works. So that detailed study would have to show whether or not that there was a 40-acre tributary of the item that was being decided, if it was a stream or not. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions to staff? I don't know who had their hand up first, but we're going to start down this end this time. Councilmember Abdel Gwan?
Speaking of the detailed study, that was one of my questions. I was concerned... I was concerned, is that something that developers would have to do anyway? Is that an additional cost to developers to do that kind of study? And then, my other question, I wonder, it seemed to me when I read through that, that it was putting a lot of this weight on one person's shoulders, you know, one person gets to decide if the plan is approved or not approved, and, you know, when, we have great staff now, they're trustworthy, but I'm concerned that with all of that on one person's plate, on one person's shoulders, is this really going to protect citizens in the future when we have one person who can approve a plan or not approve a plan? Two questions.
First part of your question, as I said, it's part of the stormwater design, when they're getting down to designing inlets and individual pipe segments, they break the site into small tributary areas. So, it's, that's all part of, part of what they normally do. This doesn't really create additional burden. To your second, second question, again, we review in our department, it's not, yes, it says Director of Public Works, Director of Public Works, or this designee, you know. So, we review transportation plans, we review construction plans, we review their stormwater plans for flood control, we review the stormwater pipe sizing. So, this is just one more, one more study of that general nature that we would be, that we would be reviewing.
Councilmember Stevens?
Given that we've had a hundred-year floodplain expand over time with development and whatnot, do you think that this stream buffer really protects us in the future? I mean, is it, is it good enough to do that?
I think the stream buffers provided, they're a vital, vital part of the, of the water quality and protection of the stream. They provide, the easiest thing is they provide roughage that slows, slows water down, especially for the, for the smaller streams, the streams, the, or the storms, the storms that cause the water to first come out of the banks. So, they are, they really are a vital part of the repairing corridor health.
I guess what I'm asking is, do you think that the buffers are wide enough now to cover the expansion of the hundred-year floodplain down the line? I mean, as the hundred-year floodplain expands, so does the buffer, is that correct?
For the larger order streams, yes. But, the watershed master plan did a very detailed study of how to recommend what the, what the buffer dimension should be for the given, for the given stream orders. So, that, that was a fairly detailed study of what, what is necessary for each individual type of stream.
Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Crass, isn't the recognition where, where we're identifying that the Director of Public Works shall do approvals, and the purpose of that really also for you, for us to have a city official serve as a contact person for the community and developers, but also for the EPA and the D N R?
Yes.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
You know, I appreciate all the work the staff has done on this. My question is, outside of city staff, has staff members or anybody from D N R or EPA, have they seen this amendment, and if so, have they offered any feedback?
We have submitted the proposed, we have submitted the proposed ordinance, we have not received any feedback from them.
Other questions of staff? Okay, now, this does require a public hearing, which I opened earlier. I'll open the floor to public comment. Please identify yourself for the record, keep your comments to under five minutes, and I expect we'll see some people this time. Maybe, okay. We'll start the clock when you get up to the microphone.
I'm Sharon LaRusa, and I live at 1102 South Wind in Raymore. And I think that the land under an MOU should not be exempted any longer from the stream buffer protection ordinance, and I agree with the proposed changes pertaining to preliminary plats and final plats shown in Sections 470.110 and 470.130. However, I think the proposed changes to Section 455.040, the stream buffer protection, needs to be reevaluated. There are so many changes that I have issues with that it's difficult, if not impossible, for me to address them in the time allowed for comment tonight. So, I sent out emails to all of you to express my specifics, but I'll summarize them tonight. As an editor with the Department of Defense for over 20 years, I know how important it is to be able to make sure that the regulations are written in a manner that's easily read and understood. They must be accurate, clear, concise, and consistent without ambiguity. The proposed changes to 455.040 do not follow these criteria. The current stream buffer protection section is easily read currently and applied by citizens and developers who can use the city's stream order map to find a specific location, see if there are any streams in that area, determine the stream order by deciphering the color code of the stream, and using the chart on Section 455.040C to determine the stream buffer width. The current stream buffer protection section was based on the watershed management plan that was developed with consultants B N I M Architects and Tetra Tech E M I, with input from a stakeholder group made up of developers, citizens, interested parties, and staff. Many meetings were held to make sure all input was considered, and the studies and observations were performed throughout the city by the consultants who came up with the plan that was specific to Raymore. It is a well-written document, even though it's over 100 pages, and it serves as a basis for the current stream ordinance. Many other proposed changes to Section 455.040 are ambiguous and inconsistent. Also, the information pertaining to the authority of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers authority is confusing and could be misleading if it is left as written in the proposed change. The Corps of Engineers area of authority is from the ordinary high-water mark on one side of the stream to the opposite bank ordinary high-water mark in jurisdictional waters. They determine the stream, which streams are jurisdictional, but that does not mean that the streams that they do not consider jurisdictional are not valid streams. It just means that those streams do not meet the criteria for their authority. The authority does not extend into areas leading above the stream bank where Raymore stream buffers apply. I addressed the specific places where the proposed changes are not accurately worded to show the two separate authority delineations. The two are separate and parallel. Corps of Engineers covers stream beds, basically, and Raymore's ordinance covers stream buffers. Some of the proposed, proposed changes could be misleading and in the least, create a situation subject to interpretation and leave the ordinance open to being subjective, which is not the way an ordinance should be written. The Corps of Engineers has the same authority and jurisdiction that they have had before this, our stream buffer was, protection ordinance was implemented in 2008. A representative at the Kansas City Corps of Engineers stated to my husband that they have not had any issues or problems with Raymore's current stream buffer ordinance, as having local stream buffer ordinances in place helps them protect the areas around the actual streams, which is their area of concern. At the February 18th, 2004 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the city staff proposed exempting all first and second order streams from compliance with stream buffer protection ordinance. This proposed change generated comments from the interested parties, who pointed out that Raymore is at the top of two large main watersheds, and as such, they contain many first and second order streams. First and second order streams at the top of a watershed are some of the most critical streams in the watershed, as all streams start with them. When the planning and zoning hearing was continued on April 15th, the reference to the removal of the first and second order streams from the stream buffer was replaced with a qualification that stream buffer requirements applies to a stream identified on the city's stream order map with a tributary acreage greater than 40 acres. This seems like another attempt to eliminate the stream buffer protection from most, if not all, the first and second stream orders. First and second stream order streams without stream buffer protection will cause as much property damage and public safety concerns, and incur just as much expenses on the part of the city to correct as third or higher order streams. What might be a benefit to the development community has the potential to be a very costly to both the city of Raymore and its citizens. In addition, the proposed change does not identify how to calculate a tributary area greater than 40. Doesn't mean that the property that has been considered within a development or the entire length of the tributary, or does it mean the stream has to be on 40 acres? It doesn't mean 40 acres drains into it. Is there a map that shows the tributaries of 40 acres or more? What about the tributaries that are less than 40 acres? Speaking of that, I do have a copy of the APAW 5600, and this is from April, or February 16th of 2011, and this specific section is 5605.3, and there's some, two, two points that it makes, and I can give anybody a copy of this that would like to have one. It talks about the streams having, a tributary in excess of 40 acres shall be preserved. Preservation of smaller streams is encouraged. And then, down in their chart, they have less than 40 acres, has a buffer width of 40 feet on each side of the high-water mark, which is different than Raymore's middle of the section, stream section. So, even though they may not say anything about the less than 40 acres, they do say that all the small streams should be preserved, and then, they do give a specific buffer width to those streams with less than 40 acres. I could not find anything, the current map is already in place for what we have, and it's easy for people to use, and in the stream order map that we have. And it was done with much research and observation before it was created, and is a straightforward way for anyone, citizens, developers, staff, or interested parties, to find a specific location and apply it to the buffer chart. In conclusion, the stream buffer ordinance is a good ordinance. The only change that needs to be considered for Section 455.040 is to take out the exception for the land that is covered by an MOU. If the entire proposed change to Section 455.040 is put into place, I believe that the proposed wording would allow all future developments to have streams within them that will not be subject to the stream, stream buffer protection ordinance. If the EPNA and D N R were not happy with the amount of land exempted under the current ordinance, I think that they would not be happy with any changes that exempt streams from the buffer ordinance in the future. I ask that you consider making an amendment to the proposed change to leave the current Section 455.040 as currently written, except to remove the stream buffer requirement exemption for MOUs, so that the land that is under an MOU will no longer be exempt from the stream buffer ordinance, and to accept the changes in 470.110 and 470.130. If any future changes to 455.040 are needed, I think they should be discussed in a work session with input from many sources before a draft is developed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I be excused for a few minutes?
Please. And we'll begin your five minutes when you're up the mic, too.
Sorry about that delay. Good evening. My name is Bob LaRusa, and I live at 1102 South Wind Drive. I have several concerns about the proposed changes to Section 455.040, stream buffer protection of the U D C, most of which I have already expressed in emails to each of the council and the mayor. I would first like to address my concerns about what appears to me to be inconsistencies within the proposed changes. On page 169 of the E-Packet, under Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection, Section A, the proposed number two says, "In part, for those stream segments identified as regulated surface waters, this determination is considered final and supersedes stream segments shown on the Raymore Stream Order Map." It is my interpretation of that statement that for any stream that is identified as regulated surface waters, which is the same as saying jurisdictional, which is the same as saying waters of the United States, that Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection, would not apply. Also, on page 169 of the E-Packet, also under Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection, Section A, the proposed number 10 says, "Streams that are authorized to be relocated under a C W A 404 permit and not part of a C W A mitigation plan shall be subject to the stream buffer regulations as defined by this section." It would appear to me that there is no way that any stream will ever qualify under the proposed number 10, because if it is going to be relocated under a C W A 404 permit, it would have to be regulated surface waters, and as such, under number two above as already stated, if the stream segment is identified to be regulated surface waters, this determination is considered final and supersedes stream segments shown on the Raymore Stream Order Map. So, it would appear that 404 permit or not, C W A mitigation plan or not, this stream will not be subject to Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection, and will not be required to have stream buffers. Because without the Raymore Stream Order Map, there's no way for the stream buffer protection to establish a buffer size. It would appear that number 10 serves no purpose, as number two will have eliminated any stream segment that would have been considered by number 10. I would now like to identify what appear to me to be inconsistencies within the memo, which is a part of the E-Packet. I would first call your attention to page 186 of the E-Packet, which is explaining the proposed changes to Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection. It states that the proposed change, and I quote, "States that if a Clean Water Act, Section 404 permit is required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, then the Corps regulations apply, and the city's stream buffer requirements will not apply to any stream segment covered by the Corps permit. This was the case before, and the provision is a simple acknowledgment that federal regulations supersede local regulations when the two are in conflict." First, I respectfully disagree with the statement that "this was the case before." The following lines are in the current stream buffer ordinance and are lined out as they are to be removed as part of the proposed change. These lines are located on the bottom of page 170 and the top of page 171 of the E-Packet. As you can see, under the current Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection, it states unequivocally that any stream that is relocated or otherwise altered, Section 455.040, Stream Buffer Protection will apply to the new stream location and order. The proposed change says that the city's stream buffer requirements will not apply to any stream segment covered by the Corps permit, so I have to respectfully disagree with the statement that "this was the case before," as it was not. I would also like to address the part of the statement that says, "The provision is a simple acknowledgment that federal regulations supersede local regulations when the two are in conflict." As confirmed by consultation with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who administer the 404 permit, there are no circumstances under which there would ever be a conflict between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction or the 404 permitting process and the local stream buffer protection ordinance. When questioned about the possibility of conflict, the representative from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers stated that not only was there no possibility of conflict, but that they see local stream buffer ordinances as a good thing, as it adds another layer of protection for the stream. The next statement in the memo that I have concerns with is on page 186 and 187 of the E-Packet. It states in part that, and I'll quote, "If there is no onsite mitigation plan with the Corps for such a stream, then the stream shall be subject to the city's ordinance." There does not appear to be any references within the proposed changes that make any reference to the words "onsite," being used in conjunction with the words "mitigation plan." These apparent inconsistencies are not the most serious problems with the proposed changes. The most serious concern is the misguided inclusion of all the proposed references to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the 404 permit. They say that a picture is worth a thousand words, and I have provided you with a picture of a stream with a part of the stream that would fall under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the part of the stream which is the stream buffers. Despite what the proposed changes would indicate, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers does not have any jurisdiction, authority, or control of any kind whatsoever over the stream buffers. The area of the stream that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over, and the only area of the stream that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over, is the stream bed, specifically from the ordinary high-water mark on one bank to the ordinary high-water mark on the opposite bank. There is absolutely no reason to incorporate references to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or the 404 permit into Section 455.040. is the stream bed, specifically from the ordinary high water mark on one bank to the ordinary high water mark on the opposite bank. There is absolutely no reason to incorporate references to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or the four oh four permit into Section four five five point zero four zero, Stream Buffer Protection of the UDC, as all that those references will accomplish is to ensure that no streams that fall under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will be subject to the stream buffer protection and will not be required to have stream buffers. As already stated, the Corps will not require stream buffers, as they do not have that authority. The city has suggested that if there is a mitigation plan required as a condition of approval for a four oh four permit, that would supersede the city's stream buffer ordinance. The problem with that is that a mitigation plan can take on several forms. Without going into a lot of detail, the mitigation plan is prepared by the developer, and there is nothing that says that the mitigation plan must include stream buffers. As reluctant as the developers are to provide buffers, why would they voluntarily provide buffers as part of a mitigation plan? In any case, it is the developer who decides what will be included in the mitigation plan, not the Corps. The solution is really very simple: leave Section four five five point zero four zero, Stream Buffer Protection of the UDC as is. The only reference to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the four oh four that is necessary is already in the section, current Section four five five point zero four zero, and it simply states that after the work for which a four oh four permit was required has been completed, the stream is still subject to Section four five five point zero four zero, Stream Buffer Protection. This entire process began because the city needed to remove the exemption from Section four five five point zero four zero, Stream Buffer Protection of the UDC that had been given to the developments with Memorance of Understanding with the city. This was what was discussed at the council work sessions in 2013, and that is all that is necessary. I ask that you consider making an amendment to the proposed change to leave the current Section four five five point zero four zero as currently written, except to remove the stream buffer requirement exemption from MOUs, so that the land that is under an MOU will no longer be exempt from the stream buffer ordinance, and to accept a proposed change to Section four seven oh point one one oh and four seven oh point one three oh on preliminary and final plats. If any future changes to four five five point zero four zero needed, I think that they could be discussed in a work session with input from many sources before a draft is developed. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Doris Sherrick, and I live at one zero eight zero seven East Two Hundred and Fifth Street, Peculiar, Missouri. Mr. Mark Fraser is the chief engineer, chief of the regulatory branch of the Kansas City District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. He was planning to attend this meeting this evening, but unfortunately, he had a family emergency and was only able to send a short email in which he answered several questions which were submitted to him as a result of some confusing and seemingly conflicting statements regarding the Army Corps of Engineers and the four oh four permitting. In his letter, he states that "In the event that I'm unable to attend, I have included a few statements that may help clarify issues and reply to questions received." His first statement, "The development of a stream buffer ordinance is a local government action that is independent of the Corps regulatory program. We have no authority over such local efforts. Second, we will take such ordinances into consideration as part of our public interest review in our individual permit decisions to the extent that our rules allow. Third, we believe local stream buffer ordinances are a valuable tool for communities to protect and manage the water resources in their communities. Fourth, the Corps regulatory program is not really well-suited to be the basis for a stream buffer ordinance. It would add unnecessary complexity, and it probably would not provide for consideration of all the local issues and concerns. There are planning processes to bring such programs together for creating a special area management plan, but that would not apply in this situation. I also think it useful to state the, quote, 'limits of authority' included in all of our permits. First, this permit does not obviate the need to obtain other federal, state, or local authorization required by law. Second, this permit does not grant any property rights or exclusive privileges. C, this permit does not authorize any injury to the property or rights of others. And, this permit does not authorize interference with any existing or proposed federal project. Please note that when we find a water to be jurisdictional, we do not regulate all activities in that water. Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act regulates the, quote, 'discharge of dredged or fill material,' unquote, only. And the Clean Water Act also exempts certain defined discharges. There are many activities we have no jurisdiction over that can cause large impacts to those waters." So these are the answers to some of the questions. First, if the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers determines that a stream is jurisdictional, do they determine the order of the stream, or do they even care what the order of the stream is? The reply, "We most commonly classify streams according to flow, ephemeral, intermittent, and perennial, and then look at the relationship these waters have to the closest traditional navigable water. The stream order classification system may be used in determining stream segments for some jurisdictional determination, that is, which is a higher order when two channels meet, but only in a relationship context." Next question, "If the Army Corps of Engineers approves a four oh four permit as a matter of standard practice, would the applicant be required to provide buffers on either or both sides of the stream?" The reply, "Issuance of a permit under Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act often requires the applicant to provide mitigation that offsets any aquatic functional loss. Reestablishment of a riparian corridor is commonly part of a mitigation plan, but not always. Additionally, mitigation is likely to occur offsite at either a mitigation bank or via payment to an in-loop fee mitigation provider." Next question, "When a stream is determined to be waters of the United States, does the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction extend beyond the high water mark on either side of the stream?" Reply, "Corps jurisdiction would be limited to those areas waterward of the ordinary high water mark and any adjacent wetlands. In a stream channel in this area, typically, the ordinary high water mark will be somewhere when measuring from the top, bottom of the channel, between a third and two-thirds of the way up the bank. It would be unusual to find it at the top of the bank." Next question, "Does the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have any jurisdiction or regulatory authority over stream buffers?" Reply, "Stream buffer ordinances are created by communities to address water resource issues like infrastructure protection, flooding, water quality, erosion protection, et cetera, as part of the local planning. The Corps of Engineers has no authority over any of these kinds of local efforts. We do believe the goals of the Clean Water Act are most likely to be achieved with greater community involvement at all levels, and are pleased when communities take on these kinds of planning efforts." Next question, "When a stream is determined to be waters of the United States, with or without a permit, would the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers require buffers for that stream or any segment of that stream?" Reply, "The only time the Corps would require riparian buffer protection or establishment would be to mitigate aquatic function impacts as a condition of a permit." Next question, "Does the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have any problem with having buffer, buffers established by city ordinance along a stream which has been determined to be jurisdictional and thereby under the authority of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers?" Reply, "Absolutely not." Next question, "Is there any conflict with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers if a local ordinance establishes a stream buffer along a stream which is determined to be jurisdictional waters of the United States?" Reply, "No conflict." Next question, "If a stream which is under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is relocated under a four oh four permit, would the mitigation ever or always require a stream buffer on the relocated section of the stream? And if a stream buffer were required, would it be required for the entire stream or just for the segment that was relocated?" Reply, "Parties requesting a permit for work in Corps jurisdiction must propose a mitigation plan if the work would result in a loss of aquatic function. Mitigation may occur offsite or onsite, or with a plan involving some onsite and the remainder offsite. So it would depend upon the nature of the impact and the mitigation plan when approved. There may be reasons where a riparian buffer won't work, such as when there are existing utilities in that area or other infrastructure, or where the applicant does not control the land on both sides of the channel." Next question, "If a stream is not under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, does that mean that it is not a stream and does not need to have a buffer and can be filled in?" Reply, "The Corps of Engineers authority is limited to jurisdictional waters of the U.S. We would have no say in work that occurred in a non-jurisdictional water course. The definition of lands or waters covered by a local buffer ordinance is not dependent upon Corps jurisdiction. It is a local land planning decision." Next question, "Ray Moore enacted a stream buffer protection ordinance in February of two thousand and eight. Has the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers experienced any problems or conflicts with the stream buffer protection ordinance as currently written?" Reply, "I am not aware of any problems or conflicts." Next question, "If an onsite mitigation plan is required, who sets up the plan, and would it be required to include stream buffers?" Reply, "Permit applicants must design and propose mitigation for projects. If we approve onsite mitigation, it may or may not require protection or establishment of a riparian buffer." Next question, "If a stream buffer is required as part of an onsite mitigation plan, would or could it be required to follow a local stream buffer ordinance if one is in place?" Reply, "The Corps would be unlikely to require a permit to follow local laws, as we can only condition permits for actions that we have the authority to enforce. Likewise, our permits do not override any other state or local requirements. A smart permit applicant would try and design a mitigation project to meet both Corps and local requirements." Last question, "Does the Corps make any distinctions regarding tributary size? Does forty acres tributary area come into play in any way in the four oh four permitting process?" Reply, "We have no such rules for determining jurisdiction. Upper watershed tributaries are jurisdictional under Section four oh four when they have a, quote, 'significant nexus' to a traditional navigable water." Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is David Flick. I live at one seven zero four zero Highland Ridge Village Lock Lloyd. I am the principal of Terra Technologies, and my area of expertise is Clean Water Act Section four oh four permitting. I and my company have permitted over four thousand four oh four permits, covering about a half million acres here in Missouri and Kansas. Today alone, our firm handled twelve four oh four permits. You're hearing testimony this evening about things that are very complicated. You're hearing good-hearted people present facts as they understand them, but many of the facts stated here tonight are in air. And as a specialist in this area, I can tell you that the statement that the Army Corps of Engineers maintains no jurisdiction outside of a stream bed is false. Under federal law, the Army Corps of Engineers, as the lead federal agency, once a nexus is passed that fill is placed in their jurisdiction, they maintain jurisdiction over every square inch of uplands. They have a requirement under federal law to make sure that all federal and state rules are followed in compliance. So when a road crosses a stream, they have an obligation to look around the area and say, "Will this activity result in the loss of cultural resources? Will it result in the loss of endangered species? Will this particular housing development cause transportation problems?" They have an authority that's broad and all-encompassing. And Section four oh four of the Clean Water Act is a permitting program that gives the Corps this wide range of authorities that's there. Now granted, it is true that the Corps of Engineers, their nexus is the placement of fill in the stream bed that itself. However, the most common form of restoration required by general and regional rule is the preservation and restoration of riparian corridors that are cleared. It is a part of every sewer project. It is a part of every, every linear trail project and everything. In fact, my family owns a store in this area called the Prairie and Wetland Center, where a half million native trees and shrubs are produced every year and restored along Missouri and Kansas streams as a result of development permits. In nineteen eighty-three, three farms students from the state of Missouri graduated from West Harbor. Those of you who don't know that, we call that the University of Missouri Columbia, West Harbor. Good joke. I told some of our students we were going to have a test once this was open. One of those agronomy majors is now chief of the Army Corps of Engineers Regulatory Branch. The other is the senior agronomist with the Regulatory Branch, and the third is standing before you today. We've worked together through years and years of regulation. Now, the stream buffer ordinance you have before you today does not mean that tributaries under forty acres in size will be lost from your watershed. It says nothing to that fact. In fact, the Army Corps is the authority who can grant permissions to fill in tributaries. And they rarely fill in tributaries under forty acres that are high-quality, rarely. They have within the four oh four program what is called a practicability test. It is a test to where applicants must provide proof that you must impact their jurisdiction to accomplish your project purpose. The primary reason that most developments impact tributaries below forty acres is because it's necessary to achieve the densities needed to, to accomplish the project purpose. And in fact, if you were to, as other communities have, protect streams that are below forty acres, the result will be urban sprawl beyond what you have ever seen before and everything. In fact, today, the average residential development protects, under the four oh four permit, greater than ninety percent of all linear feet of tributaries, regardless of tributary size. Many have asked today what's the purpose of the forty acre limit. I work with forty-two communities in Missouri and Kansas. Two use the stream order to determine the limits of their buffer. Forty of those communities use the forty acre rule. The reason for that is that stream buffers are intended to protect aquatic regimes. In the soils we have here in Cass County, and many in eastern Kansas and western Missouri, intermittent channels form at around forty acres of watershed. Intermittent channels are channels that are tied with groundwater that maintain pools, and pools represent aquatic life. The most common type of polluter post-development are ephemeral channels, channels that are in smaller watershed. They are sediment transporters, and they're the ones most highly impacted. You would be likely not surprised to know, in Johnson County, Kansas, many of our communities have piped most of the streams, not just forty acres, but eighty acres, a hundred acres, et cetera. And we've been able to study now for a period of twenty or thirty years what happens. So it has been said tonight that, that the Corps of Engineers never has a conflict with stream buffer ordinances. That is not the truth. A recent permit here in the Kansas City region, where a local stream buffer ordinance required the protection of a channel, but the channel that they were protecting was determined impaired. The federal agency stepped in and said, "Under our rules, we're requiring that this channel be relocated," even though at the local jurisdiction, it was mandated to be protected. And yet, what we were buffering was an impaired resource, an impaired resource that was pumping some four truckloads of sediment a year into Indian Creek. So in that in- So in that instance, the federal rule stepped in and said, in order to accomplish our program, we don't want this stream buffer. We want this stream relocated and reengineered to be a higher functioning system. It was said to you tonight that the Corps, that the Corps of Engineers does not require riparian corridors as a part of mitigation. But in fact, for mitigation to occur under the 2008 rules, applicants must meet the requirement of the Missouri Stream Mitigation Method, which has been through public notice and requires at a minimum for compensatory mitigation onsite that a fifty-foot buffer be maintained as a part of that mitigation. So all of these rules are very complicated and they all function, they all work to function for water quality protections. Couple of things that have been said tonight are very important and that is, stream buffers are just one part of the tool in the toolbox to maintain water quality. I feel what's before you tonight represents a good balance. It's a balance that most of our communities, most of our communities throughout Missouri and Kansas have put into place, communities such as Overland Park and Lenexa and others where we have development pressures that far exceed what we have here in Raymore and in Cass County, Missouri. I know because I also own the majority of the wetland mitigation banks throughout Missouri and Kansas. And I can tell you in Raymore, in the last, in, in this general area, in the last six years, two projects have required compensatory mitigation, two. We have over two projects a day in some watersheds that require compensatory mitigation. So this is a, a, a ordinance that puts into place several important things. It, it allows the federal government to accomplish its objective, determine which channels really pass the practicability test, which channels represent a balance of not only environmental protection, but which channels which you fill allow a community to have economical lots, which ones really don't have a huge negative impact. It doesn't mean that developers can go in and wipe it out. In fact, the compensatory mitigation program is very cost prohibitive. What you would call a ditch is now regulated as a stream. What is jurisdictional as an ephemeral channel probably goes farther upstream than what your stream ordinance map takes today. Basically, if it's water and it flows downhill, the odds are the Corps of Engineers is going to regulate that as a tributary or as a linear wetland of some type. So my recommendation to you tonight, as you have before you, an outstanding stream buffer ordinance that takes into account environmental protections, it takes into account the private sector embracing this, and developers in Raymore are going to be required under federal law to protect a lot more than they've ever protected before. What your, what your buffer serves its main place is that if a channel is being avoided under Clean Water Act, you have a buffer ordinance that goes into place to protect that channel. And we see your ordinance working in conjunction with state environmental law. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Happy to answer any questions should any arise.
I'm Gib Good, 195th Street and 71 Highway. I represent the Good Otis Development. Tonight, I, I oppose the exemption to the MOU and I'll tell you why. We're, we are working with an attorney to bring something to the city with language that would be added to our MOU, with the city's agreement and our agreement, to address this issue in the future so both entities know where they are and it's not up to any single person that we don't even know to make a decision of what a stream is and what order. I'm sorry that we don't have that in front of you now. I would like to have it in front of you by the time you meet next time. When we analyzed the first and second order streams especially on quite a bit of our property, it would take up forty percent of it in some instances. Under the MOU, we, with agreement with the city in 1994. I'll try to talk later.
We'll, we'll go ahead and stop the clock until you get back to the mic because folks
We consider that a legal agreement with the city of Raymore. We submitted that plan. It was approved. What it locked in were some general uses and densities. The stream buffer ordinance changes those densities quite a bit. Another thing we did on our side in 94 was to annex roughly over eighteen hundred acres to the city as our part of, art of the agreement. We've worked with the city pretty well since then. The reason I particularly want language that's approved by both the city and us are two. One is, I think this is a legal document and I don't think one side can change it on its own. I think it, both sides have to agree. Two, you have to realize that our history as a city is maybe, may not be your all's history. I don't know how long you all have been in town. For the first several years, we went through several different mayors, several different city engineers, zoning directors, administrators. Some of them wouldn't last over two or three years. That's why I want like, language that both the city staff understands and we understand for the future so we don't have to worry about any changes in the city. Everybody understands where they are. I'm sorry that we don't have that language in front of you today. We did do some overlays of different tracks. If you look on that track one, which is adjacent to 71 Highway, west of Dean Avenue and north of North Cass, if you take the way the one and two streams and three were marked out on that property by the consultant, it would take up about forty percent of that property. There are other ways, I think, to deal with those streams. Some of them I wouldn't even classify as streams. At the work section back then, that man was ready to call a cow path. I don't know if you all know what a cow path is, but if a bunch of cows run through a pasture long enough, they'll make a trail because they'll go into water or whatever. That's how they do. He would have called that a stream. Well, it isn't quite a stream. It may develop in some kind of drainage area in the future if you don't do something about it. But there are other ways of doing that. That's, that's why I, I hope at this, tonight, you don't, for one thing exempt our MOU. I think that's a violation of a contract. When we have this language that first staff would get to look at and agree, then we say, if you all agree with it, then go from there. Any questions?
Anybody else want to come forward? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And let's see, we're on item D. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2961.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone action on the Nineteenth Amendment to the Unified Development Code at this point until we, we hear feedback from the MDR on the plan.
Postpone indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lilith, I want to put you on the spot. Should we postpone indefinitely or postpone to a date certain and then postpone again if necessary?
I, I would prefer and think would be better certainty of all involved that we would postpone to a date certain, perhaps one of the meeting dates in June, second date, or what are they, Mr. Berlin, the ninth?
June 9th and 23rd.
I would recommend June 23rd.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone until June 23rd in hopes of hearing from DNR and somebody else.
Yes, sir.
But the, the, the motion is actually just to postpone until June 23rd, so.
Second.
There's a second? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Westco.
You know, at, at this point, I'm neither for nor against the amendment. I think points have been raised and, and I just, I need more information. And again, if Missouri DNR has actually seen this and they are going to comment, I'd like to actually see those comments before we take action because the last thing I want to do is put something in place and then we have to go back and change it when, you know, it might have just been more prudent to wait.
Other discussion? Councilmember Kellerman?
Were we planning on having comments from Missouri DNR? Is, is, is that typical? Or are they, were they going to voice in on this? I mean, are the chances of them even having a concern even valid?
Yeah.
Mr. Berlin?
Well, I, I was going to sort of ask the question along the lines of what Mr. Kellerman's asking. Are you asking us to simply send the ordinance to MDR and ask them to provide any comments without, I mean, is there anything else that you want when we? And whether they would do that, I'm not sure. But we can certainly do that, but is, I mean, as simple as that, here's an ordinance that we're proposing, please provide any comments? All right, we can certainly do that and see what they, if they respond and if so, how.
Councilmember Morehead?
On a separate note, in previous instances, we've been addressing this here from the dais. It was, at least I interpreted, it was communicated to me, or I interpreted this way, that with the three MOUs that were being affected, that communication was had between those develops, developments and city staff and then an agreement had come to fruition. The statements made from the, from the podium is that that has not been the case and, and I'm concerned about that, especially with the, the developer stating that this is something that could be handled relatively quickly or is about to be completed. I don't see a reason continuing this to June 23rd would detriment anything and in fact would honor the intention of having a mutual agreement between those two parties. So that, that, that would be to me a valid justification for a delay.
Other discussion? Councilmember Huback?
My voice is going, so I better make it fast then. I, I found merit in whatever one of them had to, to say. My main concern is why is EPA zeroing in on Raymore if we don't have problems or if we have problems that can be settled? So that's why I think we need to hear all the sides and we need to delay this so that we can look into it because EPA is coming down hard on us and we need to know why. I think we are what, one of four or five in the nation that they are wanting to know more about and that makes me uncomfortable.
Other discussion? There's a motion to postpone to June 23rd and it's been seconded. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? We have seven in, in favor, one opposed. The motion to postpone to June 23rd carries. Move on to Bill 2964. I mean, we have the first reading of Bill 2964 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2964 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2011 capital budget.
This does not require a public hearing, so I'm just going to ask for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. The 2011 capital budget contains a project to create a new entrance to Ryan's Steakhouse off of the private drive that currently goes to Firestone Complete Auto Care and Belfanti Car Wash. This was proposed by city staff in 2011 because they, we had some concern that at some point the current Ryans driveway off of 58 Highway, you can see this on the, the picture that's on page 240 if you repack it, that the current driveway, which is very low, very close to the traffic signal, would need to be closed, especially when that drive becomes relocated, Kentucky Road. So we did propose creating this new access that's shown on the attached drawing in the crosshatch, approximately in that location from the private, what's now a private drive. And at first Ryans didn't show very much interest in it and so we were going to bring, we brought forward a, a budget amendment to, to actually get rid of this capital project and then at the last minute they came back, yeah, yeah, we, we would like it. So we kept the project in. But it also requires granting of an easement from Block &amp; Company, which is the developer of the property in which Firestone is located and, and of, of that private drive. And we have not been able to get a signed easement from them. We've contacted them numerous times and they apparently do not have interest in, in proceeding with this and in granting that easement. Therefore, at this point, we would propose eliminating this capital project, returning the funds that we had allocated for that project to the transportation fund to be used for other things and we've presented a budget amendment ordinance to you accordingly.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, you have to move quicker. You're big, okay. You were blocked.
Do, do we have any kind of feedback from Block &amp; Company at all on this?
Really very little. I mean, we, we have asked them, you know, and they've, they've said, oh, well, we'll get back to you and then they don't. It's kind of been as simple as that, that we, we, because this, this capital project's been in the budget for about three years now, we, you know, periodically approach them and say, hey, come on, how about this? And they'll say, we'll get back to you and then we don't really hear anything. You have any further, further comments, Jim or Mike?
My only comment, I've talked with some representatives of Block several times about this. They've had questions, wanted information, wanted maps, diagrams. We provided all that information, but just could not get a decision either way whether they would do the easement or not do the easement.
This disappoints me greatly. I was on planning and zoning when we saw this plan before any of that stuff went in there and they were all in support of that then when they were wanting to sell their property. And our first obstacle, of course, was Ryans. They didn't want it. And I view that, that curb cut and that entrance as a serious public safety issue within my ward and it will continue to be as long as it's there. We won't grant any new ones, we know that unless we were put, able to put a dump lane in there and the developer would have to pay for that. And now that they've sold their lots, they're not interested in talking to us anymore. So I understand staff's request here and it's certainly a practical one, but I'm probably going to have to take an opposite stand on this. It has nothing to do with you, but I am irritated with this situation. I would ensure staff and Mr. Crass would agree with me that it's certainly not an ideal traffic situation, especially with the level of traffic that runs through there, the queuing of the traffic lights, and I'm sure the police have worked more than their share of accidents that location, so.
Do you have further questions?
No, I'm done. That's it. I'm done, thanks.
You can argue merits in just a second. Other questions of staff? Okay, I entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2964.
Mr. Merrimood, that we approve Bill 2964, the budget amendment for Ryan's Steakhouse access.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2964. Is there any discussion? And, and Mr. Morehead, if you'll lean back. Okay, no discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. You're in favor or opposed?
I'm, I'm opposed.
Okay, I'll call for that in just a second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition? One, two. So we have six in favor, two in opposition. The first reading passes. Let's see, that was a bill, so we move on to a resolution. May we have the reading of Resolution 1430?
The reading of Resolution 14-30 by title only. A resolution of the Raymore City Council revising the fiscal year 2014 curb replacement program.
Staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. At its meeting of January 13th, 2014, the city council approved the 2014 curb program and at your and at your work session a week ago, you directed staff to place a resolution on this agenda, which amends that program by adding nine hundred feet in the Meadows subdivision and then also submitting a budget amendment to allow for that additional work. The resolution before you then has been prepared accordingly to add that nine hundred feet and a budget amendment is the next item on your agenda.
Great, questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution fourteen thirty.
Mr. Merrimuth, we approve Resolution fourteen thirty, amendment of the 2014 curb program.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Resolution fourteen thirty, is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the motion passes unanimously. May we have the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-three by title only?
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-three by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2014 capital budget.
A staff report?
Thank you, sir. The ordinance before you is a budget amendment that will add twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to the budget to pay for the additional nine hundred feet, which you just approved in the previous resolution.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill twenty-nine sixty-three, the budget amendment for the amendment of the 2014 curb program.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-three, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Are we doing this under emergency? I thought I heard we had discussion, go ahead.
It didn't seem necessary to provide it to you as an emergency ordinance. We have the resolution, as long as you're proceeding, we try not to do, I did say that.
Yes, yes, and that's why I'm saying that.
It just didn't seem necessary, so we didn't prepare it that way.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, and thank you for that. Other discussion? All in favor? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, motion carries unanimously. And may we have the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-five by title only?
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-five by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with R.L. Phillips Construction, Inc. for the West Side Remodeling Project, City Project Number fourteen dash BG dash zero zero one, in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
A staff report, please.
Thanks, sir, I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. The fiscal year fourteen budget does include funding for the West Side Remodeling Project in City Hall. This particular project involves mainly the Building Inspections area, which is directly to the west of the council chambers here. And the Building Inspections office is the initial point of contact for any residents, business owners, contractors, to interact with city staff on various permitting matters, whether it's building permits, engineering permits, project plan review, even code enforcement matters. So individuals that want to talk with individuals, submit plans, currently go to that Building Inspections office area. Staff believes that is, that office area has certain functional flaws in its design that really hamper the delivery of good, adequate public services. The most significant design flaw that we see is the lack of a proper counter area for, again, individuals, contractors, to come in to conduct business with the city. There's no place to lay out a set of plans when a permit is being applied for. There's no good area for contact with the, with the public. In the, in a staff memorandum, I provided you a photograph of a circumstance that is very, very common. When an individual comes in for a permit, they go into the actual permit area. We have two building inspection employees in that area and there's nowhere for them to talk, to lay out plans, et cetera. Literally, the plans are thrown out on top of the desk where the permit clerk works. Similar circumstance, if individuals need to be with the engineering staff, they roll out the plans on top of file cabinets that are within their office. A second design flaw that we feel more of a safety issue is the fact that that is the only area of City Hall that's not secured. All the other offices where employees are at are secured behind locked doors. That particular office is the only one where the public that would be in the hallway can walk directly into the work area where employees are at. And so we feel that needs to be corrected. And then the final concern that we have is that the, specifically the Building Inspections area, but also all the other customer service counters that we have within the City Hall are not meeting ADA requirements. We have no specific counter for individuals in wheelchairs, for example, to be able to adequately be served and we need to correct that. We want to correct that as part of this project. What we're proposing this evening with this contract is a minor remodeling to improve the customer service area of Building Inspections. We would first propose to establish a eight-foot long counter and that would actually be in the hallway directly outside the building here. That countertop area would be three foot wide, so you can adequately lay out a set of plans and actually serve more than one customer at a time at that counter. We would also, as part of the project, need to install a roll-down door because we would have to secure that area in the evenings or when the office is actually closed. We would also propose to eliminate the doorway that goes out into the hallway and then have the access for the employees be from the internal Public Works and Community Development Office. So it would become a secured work area where they would have to access their work area from, again, inside the Community Development and Public Works departments. And then the final proposed change would be to take the former receptionist desks right outside the front of the council chambers and make a modification to the top of that particular desk area. It would stay in its general design, but we would modify the counter area. So again, individuals needing accommodation would be able to be served there, not only for permits and for engineering and community development projects, but for anybody within City Hall to be serviced there. So that, in essence, is the gist of what we're proposing as part of this remodeling project. I've included a eleven-by-seventeen plan that staff prepared as part of the bidding process for what work we wanted to have done. We did receive bids on April twenty-second, we received two bids for this project. A low bid was submitted by R.L. Phillips Construction, Incorporated, and R.L. Phillips have successfully completed projects for the city and they, in fact, did the remodeling that was done several years ago for our finance and court area where we went in and did some interior remodeling to City Hall. So it's the same company that did that work. We also checked the references that they've submitted for other projects that were performed for other public agency and found no issues or concerns about the work that had been performed. The low bid from R.L. Phillips was in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We note that is considerably lower than what we had included in the budget, what we had estimated for the project. Part of the reason for the reduction, we believe, is some changes that staff did make with the design, again, trying to limit the cost that this project would entail. And one of those was dealing specifically with the ADA access. Initially, we're going to have a countertop with two different levels. In Building Inspections, it was much more economical to try to modify the existing receptionist desk to meet that requirement. We made some other changes, including not having to purchase another reader for security reasons. We're going to use the existing doors that we have. And other minor changes were made to reduce the cost of the project. I do want to note that the budget did include a minor amount for equipment, furniture. One of the things that we would like to do with this project is to purchase a computer with a monitor that would actually be stationed at the countertop because a lot of our customers that come in, we need to view various information that we have in our records that are electronic, whether it be plaits, permits, maps, surveys, et cetera. We can do it right at the counter, we can print from the counter. It's just much more responsive to the needs that the public have when they come in to see us. So staff does recommend award of this contract for the remodel to R.L. Phillips, the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions of staff? Councilmember Kellag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're talking about using the former receptionist desk right outside the council chambers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, with that being moved, is, will there be any repairs that need to be done to the floor of the main lobby? Or is that a movable fixture, movable piece of furniture? Or is it, is it built into the floor to where the tile has to be? Am I making sense?
Yeah, currently, it actually is movable. In fact, it may even be removed to have the work done and brought back in. That's really up to the contractor. One of the aspects of the project is to secure it more to the ground. You have to really lean up against it to actually push it, but no work will have to be done to the actual tile there. The work that we're going to be doing to modify that desk is simply on the countertop itself. There's a raised portion and a lower portion. We'll eliminate most of the raised portion to actually widen the lower level so a, an individual in a wheelchair will be able to go perpendicular to the desk and actually have area to roll out plans if need be. So it would meet the ADA requirements for accessibility and there, the modifications, again, only to the top of the desk. So the rest of the desk will stay in its location, as is no tile work to that particular area.
Okay, that was my concern. I didn't, I couldn't remember how that was built in or built on top of, so anyway, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill twenty-nine sixty-five, the order contract for City Hall West Side Revital Project.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine sixty-five, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And that completes new business, we'll move on to public comment. If you'd like to make comment, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Hello, my name is Diana Parman. I understand that this issue, five-eleven, North Foxridge Drive, sorry. So that probably already tells you what I have to say. I have lived at that address for seven years now. I have never had an, I haven't had an accident, but nor have I heard of an accident outside of my home. So the, and it's obvious why this policy was drawn. My landlord's truck sat across the street, across, by the empty lot that is his and it has been parked out there for the better part of six months to a year now. And it just seems a little odd that suddenly somebody complains behind us in Creekmore and boom, is taken care of. I'm sorry, that makes me feel like a less, lesser person because I rent. I don't own the property, but that takes away from us. When we have guests, they shouldn't have to park two or three blocks away because I rent. And the way our landlord has said that the requirements were for it to be built, that was that we cannot have actual driveways. We had to have the double drive. And I also understand that with that double drive, there should be no parking there because emergency equipment can't get up there. Where I'm at, I'm pat, I'm closer to the Orshlin fence. And in that being the case, if, say, someone had a fire, the fire truck couldn't get to me if it was my place. And that's a big concern. And I have called the police several times to see if they could come out and just request the people to move their vehicles. They will not do that. And I don't know if it's because it's private property or why, but to me, that seems, you know, I try to obey the laws, I really do. I don't get tickets very often and when I do, it's something silly like a tag being expired. But, you know, I try to abide by the rules. When my guests do come over, I ask that they park in the street, not next to my home where they're not supposed to park. And I know not everybody follows rules. I have children, I understand that. But this morning, my daughter went out to her bus and I guess she had to catch it on its way southbound, back up to fifty-eight, and she almost got hit by a car. And with trying to turn Foxridge Drive, North Foxridge Drive into a four-lane road, I have a feeling that this is going to present a speeding issue because there is no check until you get down to Granada for the speed. Because I have a small, school-aged child and that terrifies me. I don't, I can't, I don't feel I should have to keep him relegated to my backyard for him to play. And I'm sorry, I'm antiquated, I do not have internet at my home, so I didn't even know that this had become an issue until I received the letter that you guys sent out, or Engineering or whoever it was that sent that out, I'm sorry. But I just, I, like I said, I know it's already passed, but I just wanted to make my feelings known and I have spoke with several of my other neighbors and there's a few of them that are as upset about this as I am because my future son-in-law comes and visits quite often. I personally have parked my car in the street before, I have seen a Cadillac parked on the street before. I've seen new SUVs, pickups. So, you know, I, and I don't know why all of a sudden it's become an issue with the parking on North Foxridge Drive. I don't see it as, I never saw it as a safety issue. Now we're going to have even more racing, trying to beat the person, you know, to get down to the one lane to go down into Creekmore, because I've seen a lot of that, too. I hear more horns honked because people are trying to race to get up around where my landlord used to park on the road. You know, those are the, and the speeding thing is one of the big issues I have there because I don't go all the way down into Creekmore, I stop about halfway down the road. So, you know, when I'm out front playing with, while my son is playing and I'm watching him, you know, I see people driving really fast down through there and I'm like, ah! And it scares me, you know, I don't let him play with the ball out front. I let him ride his bicycle out there, but only when I'm watching him. You know, and I shouldn't have to keep him to the backyard to let him play outside because I'm concerned about traffic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. A member of the press is going to speak?
Jeremy Howard, one-five-seven-one-zero, Elmwood Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. My first time being at the podium.
Yeah, you only get five minutes, though.
Right, yes, it'll be less than five. For those of you who don't know, if you don't know, I'm the editor of the Raymore Journal Newspaper and I thought this would be an appropriate platform to inform people that my wife and I, who took over the paper about a year and a half ago, will be moving on and will no longer be the editors of your local publication. The local publication will still continue, though, and under new leadership. But I did want to take this time, too, to thank the council and the city staff, too, for being incredibly helpful for us. When we first started, we had no experience doing anything with the newspaper and each one of you has been really, really, really helpful and kind and patient with us. So I wanted to thank you all for that and hope that in the future, you'll continue to partner with the paper for all the city needs, city service needs, and that we'll be able to fulfill your desires. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and move to mayor council communication, using my handy-dandy list of random, no, a random list of council members, not a list of random council members. This evening, we'll begin with Mr., Councilmember Westco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, anytime the mayor goes out of town, you know, I get to fulfill some of his duties and one of the ones that I actually enjoyed doing is I got to present a proclamation for Andrew Tate, who was receiving his Eagle Scout Award. So I got to be part of his ceremony and then part of that event and that was truly an honor. So, you know, anytime that you leave, Mr. Mayor, make sure that there's something like that going on because, you know, I truly appreciate being a part of this.
Yeah, I really liked doing the Eagle Scout ones and I did one Sunday, so.
I also want to thank Monique Lewis for presenting on the Older Americans Month. You know, fifty, sixty, and seventy is getting younger and younger every day. So I want to thank her for that information. And then I also want to thank the Parks Department for doing some planting out in the roundabout until our committee can actually get that feature moving forward. So it looks great, so thank you very much, and that's all I have.
All right, Councilmember Holman, you're next.
I think I've got all the fight out of me tonight, thanks.
You're giving up your time to Councilmember Kellag?
As they say in the U.S. Senate, I'll relinquish my time to my esteemed colleagues to right and left.
Well, Councilmember Boehner, then, you have extra time.
I don't have any comment this evening.
Councilmember Stevens, I think it's twenty minutes to you now.
Just a quick one, I wanted to give a shout out to a local business, Select Physical Therapy, which I'm getting therapy from right now because of an injury I have. I didn't really even realize it was in town until I needed it, but a very good place to go if you need it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hubach?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Morehead, I think that's about twenty-five minutes to you.
Okay, here we go.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, 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 you're a lawyer.
I know. You've already yielded-
I know. You've already yielded the time. Okay. No, I do believe we have two students still here remaining. I would like to move that we have a council recommendation to their instructors to give them extra credit because they stayed. I do also want to really encourage everyone to come out on the fifteenth for the Peace Officers Memorial Day and the event out here. You know, I'm constantly reminded, sometimes myself driving around, that at five o'clock, when a lot of staff goes home, there are a lot of staff that are also still working. And while I've enjoyed complimenting our police department on efforts like the reclamation of the pharmaceuticals, to the animal control, I know that there are times when I'm encouraged to run away, they run toward, and they put themselves in harm's way for us and our wonderful service for us. And this is an important day to help appreciate and remember people who work very hard for us. I also believe that Public Works should have more than a week, too. They provide so much for us as well, and I'm glad we could recognize them as well. And I'll finish off with two parents who live here in Silver Lake, who are also older Americans. I appreciate Ms. Lewis's comments regarding them, as helping them as they're aging. The issues of safety are very important, and I'm glad that was presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abdellkawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to recognize Public Works and Mike and all your staff for all the work you do, and I hope you get some kind of celebration next week. Follow that up with the recognition for Police Week. Of course, most people know that's near and dear to my heart. Police Week was, the idea behind Police Week is primarily the memorial and thinking about officers that have been killed in the line of duty. But it's also a great time for us all to take a chance and give them a pat on the back, thank them for all their hard work. Personally, my family and I know how hard they work, their crazy hours and the things they put up with. They definitely deserve a week for everybody to honor them. So take a chance, and if you see a police officer, hopefully on good terms, give them a pat on the back and thank them for all they do. Real quick, Chief, do you guys have blue ribbons downstairs to hand out? Okay. Police Week is specifically for the memorial, which Memorial Day, Police Memorial Day is May fifteenth. I hope everybody can come to the ceremony at four o'clock here at City Hall. And if you have a chance to stop by the police department and pick up a blue ribbon, across the nation, we encourage people to fly blue ribbons on their cars, at their homes, have blue lights outside your house. That blue is definitely a sign of support for our police officers and in memory of those who we've lost in the line of duty and supporting their families, the people that are left behind by them, and honoring their service. I also want to thank Monique Lewis for coming up and speaking, and then all of the other people. Tonight, we had a lot of people speak about the stream buffer ordinance, people who are very passionate about what they're talking about. And it takes a lot of courage to come up and share your opinions, even not this stream buffer, right? Yeah. To speak on the camera and the microphone. And just want to reiterate, we say over and over again, we really appreciate the input of people in the city. We want to know what you think, and we admire you for coming up to share your opinion and let us know how we're doing and how you feel about things that are coming before the city.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kellogg?
Last but not least.
Well, and I think there's two, maybe three minutes of time remaining.
I thought I was counting forty-two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to echo pretty much everything that's been said. I am a huge supporter of our police department and all the police departments across the nation. If there's anybody that takes the side of the cop, first of all, it's me. I don't like judging cops. I don't like taking second judgments on cops until you hear all the stories. And I appreciate everything Mrs. Abdellkawad said, you know, but the one thing I'm going to disagree with her is that you ain't going to catch me slapping no cop on the back. They got too much firepower on their strong side, so. But I do congratulate them, and we'll take a moment to honor the ones that have fallen. I will be working that day, so I will not be able to attend. If I was working second, third shift, I would be there. Also, huge thank you to the Public Works. I come from a background where my father was a Public Works all of my life. And he didn't make a lot of money, but he made an honorable living. And, you know, there's those times that those Public Works employees actually save lives. We don't have to look that far back, where we had heroic efforts by our crews. And I know that they're standing willing and ready to go at a moment's notice, and they've proven it in the past, and I know that they will in the future if ever needed. One other thing that I'll bring that other people have talked about is Mrs. Monique Lewis coming in and acknowledging the Older Americans Month and that. And I'm going to relate a experience that I had earlier in the year when I went down to Texas to visit one of my terminally ill uncles. He is of age, and his health is bad enough that he wasn't getting oxygen to his brain because his heart wasn't pumping well enough. So he was suffering from memory losses and stuff like that. And it was on a Sunday morning. We were getting ready to go to church. And this is how quickly something can happen, and things that you don't think about until it happens. My uncle and my aunt live inside of a public housing apartment complex, and you talk about regulations, all kinds of them. It's enough to make a city councilman mad, and it did. He lost memory. He was in shaving and forgot where he was at. Didn't even have any clue that he was inside of his own apartment. He locked himself into the bathroom because he felt unsafe. And he fell, couldn't get up. My aunt couldn't get into the bathroom because there was no key afforded for the door lock. I was three miles away, luckily. I was able to get there and get him out. But after thinking about this, there was a lot of things that went wrong, you know. There was a push-turn lock on an elderly person's bathroom. Now, to unlock a push-turn knob, you have to push in basically a little screwdriver and turn it. Now, think about doing that underneath stress, when your husband and your wife sit laying in there on that bathroom floor. And first of all, you ain't got the tool. So I got there, and I got him out. Everything was good. Everything was fine. I decided to go into action and get a different type of lock. Boy, you talk about a nightmare. Talk about a nightmare. And I determined right then and there that if any of those regulations or obstacles stood in any of our family's ways here in Raymore, I would be an advocate to get rid of them. Alls I wanted to do was change the lock on the bathroom door so it wasn't a push-turn to where it was just a push knob. I'll admit it, I broke a law in San Antonio, Texas. Sue me. Recall me, you know. But those are kind of the obstacles that I want us to be aware of, that are legitimate, that I hope that, you know, when we make laws and legislation or regulation, that those things come into consideration, you know. Let's not make it stressful on people that are already having a stressful life, you know. So God bless Monique Lewis and thank her for bringing the things to light and that. And just keep in mind that, you know, there's, you never know, you know. And we can't plan for everything. You just can't plan for everything. So I guess that's all I got. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I'll echo everybody else's comments on the Police Officers Memorial Day and Week, but I'll add a little spin to it. There's a citizens' police academy that's going on right now. It's starting to wind up. It's a couple of weeks, and it'll be done, right?
I think that's two more weeks.
Two more weeks, okay. My wife and I attended the Citizens Police Academy some time ago, and as somebody who has not, well, I guess fortunately, not had that much encountering with the police, I learned a lot. So if you have not been to the Citizens Police Academy and you are able to attend, I really recommend it. I have developed a much greater understanding of just what it is that our police officers do day-to-day. Some of it humorous, some of it real funny, okay, but much of it is serious. Public Works Week, the Public Works Department is one of those departments that if everything is going well, nobody realizes it exists. But just one little thing go wrong. So Mike, congratulations to you and your folks. We had a number of students here earlier. I guess maybe, just maybe, this is the last meeting, council meeting, in the month of May, and perhaps school is ending soon for this year. So, let's see, we had a park board report earlier. I'd like to mention that, let's see, it was Mr. Mason and Mr. Haddock signed up to be members of the park board. We do have openings in Ward Two and Ward Three, if I remember right correctly. Either they're open now or they will soon be open. So if anybody out there listening who is interested in serving on the park board for Ward Two or Three, let your council members know, and they can show you what you need to fill out. Chief, it sounds like we may want to set a trailer, a speed trailer, up on Foxridge. So, yeah. And Mr. Howard, you and your wife do well in your endeavors. Melissa was one of my first interviews after I became mayor, if I remember correctly, and she asked some real tough questions. So, yeah, it was, it was. So, best wishes for you and your wife. We do have reason to go into executive session this evening. Personnel Matters is authorized by six-ten-oh-two-one-three. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move it to executive session to discuss Personnel Matters is authorized by six-one-oh dot oh-two-one subsection three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdellkawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Westcoat?
Aye.
We will adjourn to executive session. We'll reconvene only to adjourn the main meeting. Thank you, everybody.